Good evening Chair and Members of the Board. My name is Anna Stratus and I'm the Cafe Manager at Oberlin Magnet Middle School. Tonight is the third time that I have come before you to speak on behalf of CNS employees and to advocate for a livable and timely wage. I am grateful to the school board for listening on those past occasions and for the wage increases and bonuses provided. However, the reality remains that CNS employees are still struggling. Here's the truth. It is impossible to pay for all our bills by working for CNS alone. As you, and I'm sure every person in this room are aware, Wake County is not an inexpensive place to live. And the cost of living rates are continuing to rise with every passing month. In fact, at the time that we wrote the petition before you just two months ago, Wake County identified that a livable wage for a single adult was eighteen twenty an hour. Today, that wage has risen to eighteen fifty-one. And yet, starting employees in CNS are making only sixteen an hour. And so I ask you this. How can you expect your employees to survive when they are earning nearly fifteen percent less than the minimum livable wage? The answer is you can't. Without the support of a spouse, there is no way. We can't support ourselves, our children, and we cannot survive alone by working for just CNS. In fact, every single parent that I know in CNS works a second job, if not even a third. Budgeting for our bills is made even more difficult by the once-a-month salary pay schedule. When you're living paycheck to paycheck, a month between each can feel like an eternity. Let me give you an example. Imagine that today you applied for a position with CNS. A few days later, you're scheduled for an interview. And a few days after that, you receive a call from the area supervisor offering you the position. Excited to start your new job, you put in your two weeks' notice at your old job and wait for HR to contact you. Typically, this takes about a month. It is now May and you have been without income for two weeks. So you're excited when you finally receive that phone call from HR with your start date. It is now one month later and you really need that paycheck. It's June and you've been without income for six weeks. However, you just learned that the finance department requires an extra month to process you in the system and you still won't see any money for some time. Another month passes before you finally see a paycheck and it's July and it's been nearly ten weeks since you've seen any income. Now imagine, when you finally receive that paycheck, that it's less than the minimum earnings needed to live in Wake County. And then is when you might begin to understand why we continue to have staff shortages in CNS and positions across the district. Tonight, I stand before you, with my union by my side, asking you to address these critical issues by adjusting the pay schedule to a bi-weekly check, including a livable wage for all public school staff in the 2023-24 school budget. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bridget Bridges, followed by Kristi Banyas. I will also say that those microphones are adjustable, so if the person before you is of a different height, please adjust them.
Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Bridget Bridges and I bring you greetings from the EC Transportation Department, where I am a Safety Assistant. We arrive to work between 5:15 and 6:00 AM to board transportation over the dangerous highways, having to relinquish all of our control for our safety to our assigned driver in pursuit to pick up our students. Due to our children's special needs, we never know what to expect. I've experienced and have been told about injuries due to car crashes, being assaulted by students, being verbally abused by parents and/or students due to issues we have no control over. We've had to become nursing assistants, along with being infestated with bedbugs and roaches. We go into some of the most dangerous communities in the Wake, Johnston, Durham, and other counties to pick up our children, deliver them to school and back home. Our children have mental health challenges, emotional struggles, developmental handicaps, behavioral issues, and homelessness. Yet, with all these obstacles, we do our jobs successfully with pride and compassion. Now, we're asking for compassion to be given to us. We, the Safety Assistants, request a building with an increase of toilets and with space large enough to house us, so we can come out of our cars where we freeze and become sick in the winter and we brawl, suffocate, and become deathly ill during the summer. Even your dogs get better treatment than this. We also request a grade increase from seventeen to twenty in order for us to receive an hourly wage that will bring us closer to the living wage. That way, some of us won't have to work multiple jobs while others of us can finally be done with a welfare assistance. And lastly, we, the SAs, want control over how we utilize our annual time. That way, we can better balance our time and our salary. And let me not forget to mention our need for sufficient light in our parking lot to decrease the injuries and near car accidents. It's not only my coming to request these changes, but it's over two-thirds of my coworkers who have joined NCAE Public School Union, along with the bus drivers, cafeteria workers, requesting for these changes. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kristi Banyas, followed by Christina Spears. Kristi Banyas, followed by Christina Spears. I do want to note that it's a little warm in here. There is a drinking fountain outside of that door if anybody needs something to drink.
Good evening Chair, Members of the Board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Kristi Banyas and I'm an Assistant Manager at Scotts Ridge Elementary School, although previously I was a floater between kitchens throughout Apex Area Schools and an Assistant Manager at Apex Friendship Middle. I'm here today to bring to your attention a critical issue in CNS that impacts the culture of kitchens all across this county: the lack of appropriate training and support of new hires in CNS. Wake County Child Nutrition Services writes on the hiring page, and I quote, "As part of the CNS team within the Wake County Public School System, you'll love the camaraderie of your team." End of quote. This is the ideal that inspired me to join the CNS family, but the reality of the work is far more isolating. When I first started as an Assistant Manager, I was aware that I'd be expected to fill in for my Cafe Manager should she be absent. I was aware of this, my manager was aware of this, my training supervisor, my training specialist and my supervisor were all aware of this. However, when that day came that my manager was unable to come to work, I was woefully unprepared to step into her shoes. With the help of fantastic coworkers, we were able to serve our kids breakfast and lunch, but for the responsibilities of coordinating orders, processing inventory, and so many other critical administrative work, I was left to figure it out on my own without the help of any support and training. Imagine yourself in my shoes and you'll be able to understand how completely incompetent and alone I felt. It was exhausting, frustrating, and very, very lonely. Time and time again, I've seen this exact situation play out. In the few short weeks that I was floating between schools, I watched several individuals brought into kitchens that I was working in without necessary training that was needed for them to adequately perform their jobs. Workers were placed in the kitchens unprepared, without the resources to seek out, other than the experience of their other coworkers, who, already being overworked, became frustrated with the now extra duty of training those new employees. The frustration fuels a cycle where their new employees are frustrated with their lack of training, the veteran staff are exhausted by the additional work that's now falling onto their already full plates, and as you can imagine, this doesn't foster camaraderie, it fosters isolation. I'm thankful to have found my camaraderie and hope within the Union and just the peace that I felt with NCAE. It's because of this that I feel hope for CNS and for the future of my career here in Wake County. Unfortunately, my rocky beginning and so many of the other coworkers' experiences doesn't inspire them to think of CNS as a long-term career. It's specifically because of the lack of support and the sense of isolation that I've seen so many of my coworkers resign from CNS. This isn't the fault of our training specialists nor our supervisors. We know they're overworked and understaffed as well. This is the fault of a poorly funded program. So again, my ask of you tonight is to address the critical need for support and training by including additional funds for CNS in the 23-24 budget. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Christina Spears, followed by Demetria Harvey.
Good evening Board Members and District Staff. I'm Christina Spears, a Special Education Teacher, proudly serving as the Wake NCAE President. Wake NCAE is the local affiliate of the North Carolina Association of Educators, an organization formed in 1970 after the merger of the North Carolina Education Association, an org of white teachers, and the North Carolina Teachers Association, an org of black teachers. NCAE is the state affiliate of NEA, formed in 1857, and we're home to over three million members. I wanted to lean into a history lesson and put some respect on our name tonight. Also, as a PhD student, I'm learning about the role of school boards and the impact of labor unions on our public school system. Since their establishment in the late 19th century, public school labor unions have petitioned school boards and state legislators to improve material working conditions and increase funding for our workers, because they knew then what we know now, that fully funded public schools recruit and retain a strong professional workforce. As a result of racist, classist Jim Crow laws in the South, working-class people like us were stripped of their rights to legally unionize. People in power, like legislators, privatizers, school board members, even superintendents, continue to call us a professional organization and assume we do not recognize the connections between politics and power, our experience as workers, and the impact it has on our children. We call ourselves a labor union because unions, with or without collective bargaining rights, are groups of workers who work together with shared interests to use our collective power to improve our lives at work. We're politically engaged, we deliver petitions to school boards, we request meetings with you all, and we fight to ensure the schools we love are fully funded both locally and statewide. For us, as politically active workers in Wake County Public School System, we know that the district's budget that y'all are working on tonight is a political process and is a reflection of our institutional values and priorities. Our CNS workers, Safety Assistants, and the staff at West Carey Middle School are standing on the shoulders of public school workers and Union members who have made these demands for decades, even centuries. We are asking for buildings and facilities that allow us to do our jobs with dignity. We are asking for livable wages so our folks don't have to work multiple jobs and conserve our students with attention and care. We are asking for training and support to provide the sound public education every student deserves. We are proud to continue a legacy of fighting for public schools by engaging in tonight's budget process and in the coming meetings. And I just want to remind us that WCPSS had a historic merger and a legacy of equity. Please don't forget the role of the Public School Union as a critical component in that history then and now. I hope you will consider this impact on our current conditions your place in that lineage by fully funding a 23-24 budget. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Demetria Harvey, followed by Daniel Grant King. Again, that's Demetria Harvey, followed by Daniel Grant King.
Good evening, Wake County Board Members. My name is Demetria Harvey and I am a Safety Assistant for the past twelve years. Us Safety Assistants accomplish students with disabilities to and from school. Without us, some of most vulnerable students would never be able to get educated. We have to do anything and everything during our rides, from wiping snot to administrating holes. If a student starts to get out of hand, we have to control them. Our vacancy rate is thirty-five percent and is highest among all job types in this district. In order to keep me and my coworkers in this job for a long haul and attract two new Safety Assistants, we need two changes. First, our pay grade has to be increased. We serve the same students as IA assistants serve, but they are paid twenty-one while we're seventeen. Is that fair? We're not only serve the same students, but we have to do it alone without support, with nurses, certified staff, or administrators. And we do all this moving on a vehicle in a hostile environment on traffic. Second, we need a better facility. Our parking lot is so dark that we have numerous of coworkers tripping, falling, injuring. Some of our coworkers have even drove into each other. We do not have an actual building. Instead, we have a trailer where a snake had been found since the last month. We have a break room that can't, all of us fit in there. This means when it's either cold or hot, we are sitting out in our cars. I would like to thank Mr. Mark Skriklin for the Chief Facilitator of the Operations for having meeting with us multiple times to address our facility concerns. He is working on getting lights up in our parking lot, as well as getting us temporary air-conditioned space before the summer heat sets. He discussed plans, ultimately moving us to a Building A, which is much bigger than our current trailer. All of that sounds promising, but we need these changes made as quickly as possible. We need lights today. Our safety can't wait. It's not just me and my fellow Safety Assistants here today. I am joined with a Union and I ask that you all would please give us a facility. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Grant King, followed by Kaii Mensah. Daniel Grant King, followed by Kaii. Thank you, Mensah. Kaii, let's call you next. Kaii, I'm very, very sorry.
You try.
All right. And then Lauren Gordon will be following.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kaii Mensah. I have worked in Wake County Schools since 2010. I started as a cashier assistant at Meabrook High School. Right before COVID, I did the training to become a manager. And I started as a manager at Pentecreek High School in January 2020. We have a lot of equipment problems. We have two milk coolers that have been broken for more than six months. Maintenance people have come by many times to fix them, but right now, only one is working. For the second one, they even stated that they don't even know what's wrong with it. But it doesn't get replaced. We complain about the equipment problems, but nothing gets done. We have to talk to the administrations of the school because nothing gets done. Earlier this year, despite our efforts to pull paint off ice from the freezer to cool the milk, the students were complaining about the milk being sour. It wasn't out of date, but it was because the cooler was broken. Parents called me to complain. At the time, I only have two employees working with me. We were running around like crazy, working for the full line. I am supposed to have five employees. I am supposed to be doing my pre-planning, writing down my list for ordering, inputting cells in the computer. Instead, I am on the floor, prepping and backing the line by myself. Eventually, Pentecreek Administrator noticed and asked me if I needed help and they stepped in to help. Sometimes, we aren't even able to open the line to serve lunch at 10:30 when we are supposed to, because we are behind. It affects my family. I wake 5:30 AM, sometimes to 5:00 or 6:00 PM. My husband and my kids start calling me. They get worried. For a while, I was on health restriction, but I had little to no help in the morning. I wasn't supposed to get running around on the line, but since I have no one to help me and serve the students, I have to do it. We do this because we love our job, we love our students, but we also need to take care of our family. I get involved in the Union NCAE to talk to other people to see if we can get more help to try and fix what is broken. When I got involved and had our first meeting, I heard the same thing everywhere. We need to replace the old equipment so that it's usable, so we can have to clean ourselves. We need to hire new people.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Gordon, and followed by Ms. Gordon, Patricia Collins. Thank you. I'm going to remind people that we have twenty-six speakers tonight and we all have three minutes to speak. And these are all, we appreciate you being here, Ms. Gordon, and you'll be followed by Patricia Collins.
Hi, my name's Lauren Gordon. I do want to say I'm very supportive of NCAE, but I'm here to talk about something else tonight. I'm a mom of two young children who will soon be students in the Wake County Public School System. In 2007, I was a student at Virginia Tech, where a gunman killed thirty-two of my friends, classmates, and educators. I'm here to address the Board about preventing gun violence at schools in Wake County. I do want to state now that although my background and experiences I just shared are anecdotal, the statistics and recommendations I'm going to cite are based completely in facts and evidence. We now know that firearms are the number-one killer of children in the United States. They kill more children than car accidents, cancer, and any other childhood illness or accident. If my children or your children die before they become adults, a gun will be the most likely reason. Four point six million children in the U.S. live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded firearm. Coupled with the fact that an incidence of gunfire on school grounds, up to eighty percent of shooters under the age of eighteen got the gun from their home or the homes of friends or relatives, the threat of children getting access to firearms and bringing them to school is greater than ever. In your school board code of ethics, it stated you should remember always that a board member's first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending public schools. Our school board has the obligation to do everything they can to keep our children safe while at school, as there is no educational welfare for students that aren't breathing. I do applaud the Board calling for lawmakers to pass a state statute requiring safe storage of firearms. I would also recommend you extend this support to an assault weapons ban in our state. More than eighty-five percent of fatalities in mass shootings are caused by assault rifles. Your influence is essential in demanding that lawmakers protect our children by passing legislation that keeps them safe. I also applaud you for presenting the Be Smart Firearms Guidelines at an earlier meeting. However, I was unable to locate these guidelines anywhere on the Wake County Public Schools' website, even when I specifically searched "Be Smart" in the search bar. Within the School Safety and Emergencies Overview tab on the WCPSS website, there's no discussion around gun violence or preventing gun violence. On the Student Health page, there's a mention of suicide prevention, but nothing about how the majority of American suicide deaths involve firearms. In turn, my second recommendation is that we should train Wake County parents and guardians on Be Smart Guidelines for firearm safety and provide resources and materials to them throughout the school year so it remains top of mind. For those, I'm not going to go over that. The school board should provide links on their website, encourage all Wake County schools to include it in their websites, and host presentations that can be attended in person and virtually at all schools for students and their guardians. Some of this may feel like just one more thing, but this type of gun safety education will literally mean life or death for many children in Wake County in the upcoming years.
Our next speaker is Patricia Collins, followed by Jessica Lewis. Patricia Collins, followed by Jessica Lewis.
To the school board and to all attendance, good evening. My name is Patricia Collins and I am a Safety Assistant. I'm here this evening advocating for a much-needed raise for the labor that is required of WCPSS Wake County Public School System employees, namely Safety Assistants, Bus Drivers, Teachers, IA's, administrators, cafeteria workers, and custodians. We monitor, assist, and serve the most marginalized and vulnerable students in the school system. This work is very challenging and unpredictable. Each of these students must have our full attention in these vehicles, out of these vehicles, and in these vehicles, in the classrooms, cafeteria, restroom, including campus grounds. We want compensation for the work that we do, the labor that we labor for these children, and we should have the equal as the other departments of the Wake County Public School System. Because of our jobs that are so demanding, unpredictable, and dangerous, we are here to bring awareness to the public's eye about this group of special needs students who are so vulnerable and marginalized and left standing alone. They are the ones who suffer and seems not to be the ones that are helped. They are the least of all, and it should not be that way. We are going to give voice to these voiceless and to them that need hope, but most of us, we're going to show them love by standing up for them. And so we are asking everyone who does not belong to NCAE to unite with the other public school system and stand up for better pay and decent facilities, and I thank you for this time.
Our next speaker is Jessica Lewis, followed by April Henry. That's Jessica Lewis, followed by April Henry.
Good evening. I was once naive and believed that the public school system should be trusted to provide my kids with a great education. That trust was lost a couple of years ago when my eyes were opened wide to what was being forced upon our kids. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is toxic. DEI attacks the integrity of academic goals. DEI is failing our students. I would like to see a new superintendent focus on academic excellence. I have my daughter's sixth-grade meet-and-greet at what will be her new middle school next year. I took a screenshot of the book she will be reading in the curriculum to research them. You might ask why? I am about to tell you. This past school year, I was approved to be a Wake County substitute teacher in the school system. I knew there were pornographic books in the school libraries for our kids to check out, but I was shocked when I was subbing, sorry. I was shocked when I was subbing in a high school that these books are made mandatory reading for our students. Why are students being forced to read aloud about masturbation, pussy, anorexia, faggot, racist assholes, and committing suicide? These are all detailed descriptions of the book, "The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian." Do you honestly think our kids want to read this trash, especially in front of their peers? I can answer that question. As I was in the classroom, when a female student said she was not going to read it and was laughed at by our teacher and peers. An investigation was done, but the school system has not provided a resolution. Another example of dismissing major concerns is sweeping it under the rug. I have also called the English Curriculum Department and left a few messages to not get one returned phone call back. Can you please have her reach out to me? I would like to have a meeting with this person approving books like these. Ask yourselves, are you okay with your own children reading this material? Would you go into one of the schools you represent and read this book to the students? Whoever is approving these books needs to be fired. Books like these have no business being forced on our students. For people saying we are banning books, no, we are not banning books. We are parenting, looking out for the best interest of the information our children are consuming. These books are made to stand in the classroom so parents have no idea what their children are reading. Parents deserve the right to know. With more shootings, more suicides, more addictions, and more mental illness, do you really think this reading material is a good idea? My hope is the new superintendent will do a much better job with what is allowed as reading material for students. We need a superintendent who makes our children's safety a top priority by having more SROs in schools and adding metal detectors. We need a superintendent that pays the staff, working directly with our children, a reasonable living wage. This also includes social workers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and substitute teachers. We need a superintendent who focuses on reading, writing, and math. You have heard a lot of parents that want the focus to be on this. What are you waiting for? Are you going to listen? Stand strong for our children, because they deserve an excellent education.
Next speaker is April Henry, followed by Becky Lou Hobbs. April Henry, followed by Becky Lou Hobbs.
Good evening, Board Members and everyone here tonight. My name is April Henry and I'm also a Safety Assistant. And my job as a Safety Assistant, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. My job as a Safety Assistant is ensuring the safety of special needs kids to and from school. As previous of some of my coworkers stated, we get to work anywhere from five in the morning to six. And sometimes, you cannot even see where you're going because of the parking lot is so dark. Me personally, I've came close enough to hitting one of my coworkers and that was enough for me. Hoping that we, as Safety Assistants, get the training that we need to do our job as the best as we can. Also, a better working place, meaning bathroom, and of course, some might find it funny, vand- and of course, some might find it funny, vandalism. Reason being is because, I have one example. One day, I came back from my route and really had to use the bathroom, but I made a choice to use the men's bathroom, and little do I know, someone almost walked in on me. We, as safety assistants, also need better pay. I'm speaking as a mother of a special needs kid, and it has been more than a few times that I got home first before my child. Reason being is because of no drivers, no safety assistant to go on these routes to bring our kids home. More than half of the safety assistant staff have joined in the NCAE union and been working together, speaking out on what we need to better our job as safety assistants. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Becky Lou Hobbs, followed by Colleen Miller. Becky Lou Hobbs, followed by Colleen Miller.
Happy Easter. We're still in the Easter season. I'm Becky Lou Hobbs, and I'm here to discuss a series of books that's in two middle schools and 18 of the 34 high schools. This series is called Assassination Classroom. It has more than a dozen books in the series. I handed Mr. Blumberg a printout. I would have hoped you guys would have looked at it, but I guess I will have to show a few of the pictures here. It depicts murder in the classroom. It depicts some very despicable acts in the classroom. Some of the things that this book talks about is assassinate your teacher. I've been wanting to kill a teacher. So, this book depicts killings, murders, and sexual images. Supposedly, it's rated ages 16 and up. And here's a quote what the author says about it. "Kill is a fascinating word. It's often used but rarely put into action. So I decided to create a story centered around this unique word. If you enjoy it, you can kill me now and I'll die happy." One of the basic tenets of the United States is life. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Yet this author wrote a series of books that speaks about killing, murder, and assassination. Now, I don't have to repeat what has happened these past few weeks, but that's a very antithesis of life. With these books available in middle schools and high schools in Wake County, what, what is the literary value of these books? What possibly could they teach that is positive and life-affirming? These books talk about killing, killing teachers, murder, assassination. How can you, in good conscience, allow these in our schools? And some of you board members prattle on, some of the previous board members prattle on about these horrible acts of violence that have occurred in our society. There are people have lost their lives. But you, Wake County School Board, allow these types of books in the schools talking about assassinations, assassinations of kids, of students? And then you wonder why there is violence. These books need to be removed from each public school library now. Wake County needs to have a public school rating system on these books that needs to be age-appropriate. They need to warn of violence, of murder, assassination, inappropriate sex, any other topic that might need to be looked at. We need to develop this. We don't have it. We have the abilities. Please, keep these types of books out of our kids. A 16-year-old, in my opinion, is not, should not be reading a book talking about killing a teacher. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colleen Miller, followed by David Grino. Colleen Miller, followed by David Grino.
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. For the record, I have a grandchild in a Wake County middle school, and my daughter graduated from Enlow High School in 2000, so I'm a grandma here. But I kind of changed my plans because Becky stole my thunder. I was going to talk about those books too. They're actually, I was astounded when I heard these books were in Wake County schools, and it's horrifying. I want to start off with reading from a book, so we've got storytime, ladies and gentlemen. So mute your, if your kids are in the room, anybody watching, you might want to mute this. "The Haters" by Jesse Andrews. Summary of concerns about this book is it contains obscene sexual activities, sexual commentary, excessive, and frequent profanity. On page 101, "It was definitely my boner. No one was awake to stare and discuss at the lurky jailbreak of my sleep boner. Still had the boner, masturbating in a brisk, businesslike manner into the sink with the hotel conditioner." Page 102, "Well, I don't know either, but it looks like jizz." Now, the language is not good English, just keep that in mind. "Well, is true or false? That's your jizz in our sink." Shut up about Wes, jizzing in the sink. Rinsing isn't always enough to get jizz all the way out of the sink, but I figured it wasn't just awkward because I had masturbated in the hotel sink. Page 265, "She guided me onto my back and pulled on the bottom of my briefs, and I pushed them over my knees and feet and was completely naked and not hard at all. She straddled me and pulled her top off, and her breasts flopped out, and I heard them more than saw them. She reached behind herself and kind of carefully took my not-hard dick into one, and pretty into one, and I couldn't really think about anything else. And pretty soon after I was hard and she shook her hand away, I heard her opening some little crinkly package and could feel and felt her put the cool plastic middle of the condom snugly on the front of my dick." Anyway, you get the, I don't want to read anymore. I'm sick of it. You get the image, you get the count on the words used in this book. Ass was 18, bitch 6, cunt 1, dick 77. The F-word was 196, the GD-word 6, piss 10, the P-word for girl parts, 5, and the SH-word 121 times. If my, to me, that book has no business in any public school. How many billions of dollars do we spend on education every year in our public schools? What a waste of money these books are. There are hundreds of light books in our public schools. I have seen them for myself. I have read some of them, and they're disgusting. They make me want to vomit. So we need, what I need from you, I ask from you is you find a way to keep these books like this out of the hands of minor students, like Becky suggested, a way to rate them and keep them away from our students. Why do we need to waste our money on these books? Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Grino, followed by Donna Lupus. David Grino and Donna Lupus.
Good evening, board members. I'm David Grino, and I'm here supporting my company, USUV Clean, out of Wilmington, North Carolina. USUV Clean, you might ask, why is a guy from Wilmington driving all the way here with my coworkers here from Wilmington? Well, we've been reached out to by everybody you can think of, from parents to principals to bus drivers because your buses, we've heard, are very, very short-staffed right now. And what we have done in the Santee Lynch's region of South Carolina, we have gone in with Congressman Jim Clyburn's, with his gratitude and his support, along with Senator Tim Scott, we have installed what's called FAR UVC technology in your school buses. We've just finished up 331 school buses in six districts. These state engineers allowed us 90 days to get it done. We got it done in six and a half days. We also installed the lights in 72 schools over 2,500 square miles. They allowed 90 days for that. We got it done in three and a half. What UVC technology does, it renders the DNA molecule of the nuclei of the cell, and Doc, you may know more about this than me, but what it does, the DNA helix, if you guys remember in biology, the DNA-twisted ladder-looking thing, it rips out the rungs of the DNA. It renders everything, the pathogen useless, the virus is inactivated. And so what I'm here suggesting is the shortage of your school bus drivers probably has to do something with the pay, probably has something to do with the bonuses, you know, incentives. But I guarantee you one thing that I saw when we were driving in here, eight of eight school buses, we saw the driver was still wearing a mask. It is a safety issue because in the Santee Lynch's region, which is 80% at or below the poverty level, they are having no issues with their 331 school bus drivers. No issues. They are actually having, from other counties apply and other districts, apply to come drive buses there. They're not having troubles in hiring for their school systems, like the special needs classes. They're not seeing this issue. And it's amazing that during the Omnicron and Delta variant, that the school system saw a 38% to 40% increase in instructional hours and attendance. Is it because of the lights? Maybe so. Another thing that it's hurting is these kids are being looked after by their grandparents, a lot of them in these rural areas, and they're bringing this stuff home to them. So now you've got kids that are being raised by no one. And that's what's spiking the juvenile crime rate in South Carolina, and it needs to stop here.
Our next speaker is Donna Lupus, followed by Janet Peterson. Donna Lupus, followed by Janet Peterson.
Good evening. My name is Donna Lupus. I am a retired teacher from Wake County. I started teaching in the '70s. I've taught in Connecticut, Puerto Rico, Fairfax County, Virginia, and I retired from Wake County after 30 years of teaching, so I've been around the block. Teaching has changed over the years, starting in the mid-'70s. Teachers now, I don't see teachers now as being creative. They're not allowed to be creative. Back in the day, we could, the curriculum was handed to us, and we were responsible for instilling that curriculum in the students by the end of the school year, and that's what we did. Now I feel teachers' hands are a little bit tied. I don't think the term equity jives with the term creative teaching. I don't think the two can go together. Today's, the achievement today is down. The test scores are down, and I can't hear that it's being blamed on COVID. That should be done with now. Students are graduating, not being proficient in reading and math. They're graduating. Where are they going? I think taxpayers should be up in arms about that. What are they paying for? They're paying for a generation of children who cannot go out and do, they'll be out here looking for minimum wage, and that is not fair. And what is up, what is up is depression, thoughts of suicide, sad kids. Where's that coming from all of a sudden? There are children around the world who are in war-torn countries, and they're happier than some of the kids in this country. Where is that coming from? It is mind-blowing to me. It seems, and I'm not just talking about Wake County, I'm talking about our country. It seems that school boards have become the parents of children. Parents have relinquished their children. Schools, you take care of them. And I think school boards are doing a lousy job. Kids are not learning, and the depression is growing. I don't know where that's going. And another thing that has blows my mind is there is no discipline. Children cannot learn if they're just allowed to go, oh, boy. We need discipline. If children are not listening, they're not being instructed. We're creating a two-tiered society. Kids who go to private school and kids who go to public school. Do the math on that, two-tiered system. My two grandsons were in Wake County Public Schools a year and a half ago. Both identified AG in advanced classes. They have since come out and are in private school, thank you. And they had to do boatloads of work to catch up to the kids in the private school. That's sad.
Our next speaker is Janet Peterson, followed by Jim Walsh. Janet Peterson, followed by Jim Walsh.
Before I start, I just want to say that I was once a member of NCAE, and I stand in solidarity with all these workers that work in the cafeteria and bus drivers, and they deserve better. They deserve better. I also had the privilege of teaching at Creech Road for six years. Love that school. So I'm here today because after spending 25 years teaching children to read, I am shocked and surprised at what is being made available for them to read. And so I want to share with you a book, and if there's any minors or children around, I hope that you leave the room quickly. I want to talk about the book Shine by Lauren Miracle. It has a pretty cover with a flower, and it looks very innocent, but there's no warning label on that book. This book is about a 13-year-old girl that discovers hidden secrets about drugs, alcohol, and sexuality. This book has profanity, derogatory terms, pedophilia, and it's located at Apex Middle School, Centennial Campus Middle, Ligon Middle, Wendell Middle, and it's at 16 high schools in our district. So I want to read a little bit of it to you so you get the idea. "His breath smelled like my daddy's corn liquor. He fumbled at the elastic of my panties, but my cutoffs were too tight." And you know this is a youth, a minor. "And he couldn't work his fingers to where he wanted. Come on, cat, let me feel how wet you are." I don't know what he meant. I pressed my spine into the sofa to get away from him, but moving like that raised my hips and loosened the hug of my shorts. His fingers slithered under my panties. "Oh, yeah," he said, moving his fingers the best he could. "See now? I was lost. Tommy was touching a part of me that no one was supposed to. I was pushing against him, but he was so much bigger than me." It goes on. On the next page, "By that point, Tommy had unbuttoned my shorts and yanked them down around my thighs, along with my panties. I was gripping them, trying to get them back up, but he was stronger. He had no longer had his hand down my tank top, but instead his arm was stretched across the back of the sofa, bearing his weight, while his left arm rode up the length of my belly, straight as a rod, until the sharp flex of his wrist, with Aunt Tilde standing frozen behind him in the doorway. He got one finger up inside me. I whimpered. He kept at it, the hill of his palm driving into my pelvic bone until he got into more, and it goes on." I can tell you that if an 11-year-old had been molested, they certainly don't want to relive it by reading this book, and if they haven't been molested, they certainly don't want to read this book. There was no warning label on this book. It was attractive. School libraries are not the place for this kind of content. It is sexually inappropriate. I want you to consider explicit sex, violence, horror, profanity. What kind of criteria are you using when selecting books for the library?
Our next speaker is Jim Walsh, followed by Joseph Kingsley. That's Jim Walsh, followed by Joseph Kingsley.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, board. My name's Jim Walsh. I live in Cary. My son and I were having a conversation the other day. He's got a 10-year-old and a 16-year-old. Talking about movies. Well, they went to see Mario Brothers. Great movie, PG. They had a great time. The 10-year-old said, "Wait a minute, I want to go see Dungeons and Dragons." Can't go see it. It's PG-13. He has a dilemma. So, a 10-year-old can't go see that movie, but yet it got me to thinking about our society. Our society accepts having movies rated and even video games rated. This got me to thinking about how our society accepts these ratings. As society, parents, we feel safe knowing that the measured rating system is in place, is acceptable, and understanding the overall mental and visual level of maturity needed to enjoy and understand the material that is being displayed with specific movie or video game. As a matter of fact, it is so important that there's an entertainment software rating board. Hear this. This is their mission statement. "Our mission is to help parents make an informed decision about video games and apps their children play. Our advertising review council actively enforces industry-adopted advertising guidelines and privacy certificates." Wow, that's a powerful mission statement. So how do they do this? How do they have this rating system? Well, first... Well, first of all, that rating system is published on the material that's being purchased, either on the outside cover, the CD, and/or when the movie starts and/or the game starts. And their rating system is fairly simple. E for everyone, E-ten, generally suitable for ten and above, teen, generally suitable for thirteen and above, M-seventeen. Oh, generally suitable. There's an interesting common theme here. Generally suitable. This is a guideline. So what would happen if a Wake employee, a Wake County employee of a school system brought in a game of M-seventeen to the schoolroom or an R-rated movie? How would that go over? But yet we have these books in our schools, and we don't have a problem, and the school board is well aware of it. That's a problem.
Our next speaker is Joseph Kingsley, followed by Karen Merchant. Joseph Kingsley, followed by Karen Merchant.
Hello. Glad you guys are all doing well. There are nearly two hundred schools and one hundred sixty thousand students in Wake County, and it is our collective duty to protect each and every one of these students. I read that Wake County schools have seventy-five resource officers on school grounds. We should have at least two hundred officers to ensure there is one at every school, although two at each school would be much better. Right now, the officers are stationed almost entirely at middle schools and high schools, despite elementary schools being targeted in shootings more frequently than both. Having officers near the school will not prevent a tragedy, but having them on school property certainly will. Resource officers deter fighting and bullying as well. We had another active shooter lockdown drill at my son's elementary school last week. I never had a lockdown drill when I was in school, but we did have an officer on the property every day. It was safe, and I felt safe. We now live in a sick country where mass executions of children don't last a week in the news cycle and are forgotten until the next one a few months later. Everyone talks about common sense gun laws, and I'm all for that, but gun laws in our culture are not going to change anytime soon, and we need a solution now. Common sense is having police officers at every school. When bad people want to hurt good people, they always find a way to get a weapon, but those deranged cowards rarely target places with police officers on duty. They always attack gun-free zones, the softest, easiest targets. There is no reasonable argument against having armed police protecting our children. We have armed guards in so many other places. They're all around us all the time, but we neglect the most important and most vulnerable. A small number of grossly misinformed and cynical people have said resource officers, resource officers will not prevent shootings. That is a patently false and ridiculous claim. There are far too many examples to point out the absurdity of statements like that. You may hear people say a police presence creates a bad environment. Compared to the environment of widespread terror created by shoot, by school shootings, absolutely not. Children, no police are there to protect them. I always felt safe with officers in my school. Our kids are everything. Safety protocols should be at the forefront of the annual budget. Children are the most important thing, and we have to protect them. What could possibly be more important than protecting them? We should use every practical measure to keep them safe every single day. That should be-
Among many other things, April is Occupational Therapy Month. I, along with a couple of other OTs, want to give you a glimpse into our roles in the school setting. Since speaking in March, I've met with multiple state representatives and senators to discuss recognizing OTs and PTs as educators, moving our professions to the certified scale. During many of these meetings, I was asked, "How does an occupational therapist support children, and why are we called occupational therapists?" Our role is to support the engagement and participation in a person's daily occupations. For children in a school setting, their occupation is a student and a classmate. OTs promote independence, skill development, and engagement in their academic activities and their daily routines. My day may consist of singing Ring Around the Rosie and building a garage out of blocks with a three-year-old before transitioning to a fifth-grade classroom to support a student with identifying visual strategies and modifications for cluttered assignments. We provide specially-designed instruction through targeted interventions in conjunction with consultation and collaboration with our special education colleagues. Maintaining experienced staff has a direct impact on student services, and collaboration offered by an experienced OT provides valuable contributions to our teams. In my time as an OT, I have provided training during staff meetings and mentoring for new therapists. I support new teachers in facilitating meetings and navigating IAP paperwork, which helps ensure compliance with special education regulations. This is critical given the current vacancies and turnover in our special education setting. Retention of school-based OTs provides unique opportunities for developing and maintaining family relationships, as we often serve students for multiple years. In addition, our collaboration with outside providers creates a bridge and consistency between the community, the home, and the school settings. OTs support our teams and administrators in understanding the least restrictive environment, given our knowledge of multiple settings and regional programs. Our view of the whole child allows us to support adapting and differentiating, differentiating instruction to meet the needs of our most unique learners. In other settings, OTs are viewed as medical professionals, but because of the many reasons I described, in a school-based setting, we are educators. Just as we advocate for our students with disabilities, we will continue to advocate at the county and the state levels for recognition and compensation as an educator within the school-based setting. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris O'Trogi, followed by Kirsten Howe.
I just want to say that you're the first person who's ever tried to say my name correctly the first time, so I'm so impressed. That's literally the first time that's ever happened. Okay. Good evening. My name is Chris O'Trogi, and I've been an occupational therapist with Wake County since January of 2021. I'm here to help answer a question I get all the time. What exactly is occupational therapy? Occupational therapy, or OT, is not an easy career to define. OTs can work in schools, hospitals, outpatient clinics, rehab facilities, and more. Treatment looks very different in each setting, but ultimately, our goal is the same. The goal is to improve a person's ability to perform activities or occupations that are meaningful to them. In the schools, OTs help students of all ages and all ranges of ability to engage in meaningful occupations such as play, communication, writing, creating art, eating meals, and using the restroom. We perform evaluations and set goals. We provide direct therapy, adaptive equipment, and environmental modification. We consult with IEP teams, implement strategies in classrooms, and collaborate with teachers, parents, and other disciplines to support students in the special education and general education settings. Occupational therapists offer a unique lens to support academic performance. We are trained to assess motor function, executive function, visual motor skills, sensory processing differences, and more. Our involvement helps Wake County provide the best possible education to its students. Education is about empowering students to live their best life. Occupational therapists are trained to empower those who have unique needs and abilities. Occupational therapy is a second career for me. I started out in business, but my heart pulled me in a different direction. I graduated with a Master's of Science in Occupational Therapy in 2015 and worked in clinical settings prior to accepting position with Wake County Public Schools. Due to a technicality, I was credited with only one year of experience when I started with Wake County in 2021. My current salary is similar to my business salary almost twenty years ago. My school pay roughly equates to thirty-five percent less per hour than I made working as an OT in clinical settings. Due to another technicality, Wake County OTs do not earn as much or carry the same job classification status as colleagues with similar degree requirements. I feel like I belong in the schools. My best moments happen when I see that look of accomplishment or hear, "I did it." While my job is rewarding, I sometimes wonder if by staying, I'm allowing myself and my profession to be treated unfairly. I wonder if staying with Wake County is actually perpetuating the problem. For now, I've decided that I believe so much in the difference OTs make for our students that I'm going to stay and help be part of the change that needs to happen. I hope this information helps you to see the value of school-based occupational therapy and the importance of attracting and retaining quality occupational therapists in our school system. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kirsten Howe, followed by Margaret Watkins. Kirsten Howe, followed by Margaret Watkins.
Hi. My name is Kirsten Howe, and I'm a Meredith College student. I'm also a part of the Future Teachers Program of Wake County. I've been in the Wake County school system since kindergarten, and I recently graduated from Fuquay Varina High School in 2021. I'd like to start off by remembering the victims of the Nashville shooting. Mike Hill, sixty-one. Catherine Coon, sixty. Cynthia Peak, sixty-one. Evelyn Dykos, nine. Hallie Scruggs, nine. And William Kinney, nine. I'm here to tell you that I am scared, sad, and even angry. I am scared for my future students. I am scared to walk into a school, and I'm scared to become a teacher. I am saddened by the fears teacher, student, staff, and I have to face every day, and I am sad for all the lives lost due to census violence. Most of all, I am angry. I am angry because I have to be here and beg for change because not enough is being done. Teachers are dying. Children are dying. Administration, even custodians, are dying. While children and teachers are being slaughtered at school, school boards and legislative bodies are focused on pronouns, banning books, and critical race theory. We have our priorities in the wrong place. I recognize and appreciate that you've called on lawmakers to ask for more safety funding and advocating for gun safety storage, but it is not enough. Schools around this country are paying for the consequences of inaction. Instead of focusing on what schools can do, we need to be focusing on what our government can do for us. But first, we need to recognize the true problem. Our problem in this country is our gun culture. This country has more guns than any other place in the world, and we have more guns than we do people. Increasingly, increasingly, a lot in the country, gun restrictions have been on the decline. Just two weeks ago, North Carolina repealed the state's requirement that a person needs to obtain a permit from a local sheriff before buying a pistol. We are going backwards. I urge you to call on lawmakers in our state to pass common sense gun control laws and not turn our schools into militarized zones mimicking a prison building more than it already has. This means an assault weapons ban, a buyback program, raising the minimum wage to buy semi-automatic weapons, banning high-capacity magazines, strengthening background checks and gun licensing programs. All of these, all of these I just discussed are mentioned in Protecting Our Kids Act that I provided you, you the summary with. A bill like this can be passed in our state legislature. I will leave you with this. As we know, military personnel get a Purple Heart if they are wounded or killed as a direct result of enemy action. If I happen to get wounded or killed by an enemy as a teacher, where's my Purple Heart? I will serve my children in keeping them safe in school, as I am a last resort in keeping them alive. Instead of an award for trying to protect my students, I would have my name plastered all over the news while NRA-backed politicians continue to send their thoughts and prayers while nothing changes and we wait for the next one to come along. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Margaret Watkins, followed by Megan Kaufman. Margaret Watkins, followed by Megan Kaufman.
I actually came here today because I wasn't hearing back from staff about an idea that I had to help with these, building new facilities. I actually heard back while I was sitting here that, that there was no mechanism for me to place donations that I get for the school system. So why don't you guys just create one? Why is it sort of just dropped? You know, you have a problem, you're not going to get anywhere with the General Assembly. The two parties, they just, they can't get along long enough to accomplish anything. So I'm proposing a solution, and I just need you guys' help accomplishing that. I don't work for the school system. I'm just a parent. The other thing, all these people here work for the school system. I used to work in HR. Happy employees are just more productive, period. So if you guys can focus on safety, building those facilities, and keeping the employees happy, that, those should be your top three priorities. So, thank you.
Megan Kaufman, followed by Michelle Morrow.
Hi. My name is Megan Kaufman, and I am an occupational therapist with the Wake County Public School System. I have always had a passion to help others, specifically others with special needs, from the time when my sister was born, three and a half months prematurely. I watched her participate and grow in various therapies, PT, OT, speech, vision, the list goes on, as well as within the public school system. I was always fascinated with the independence that she was able to find thanks to her, excuse me, team of therapists, but specifically, her occupational therapist. When doctors would place limits, therapists would bypass them. We aren't here to talk about my sister, though. We're here to talk about occupational therapy. I graduated with my undergraduate degree in special education from East Carolina. Go Pirates! And continued on to get my Master's in occupational therapy from the University of Alabama in Birmingham. I have since worked in a hospital setting, the private setting, and for the last five years, the school-based setting, where I found my home. I have worked with students from birth, or three, to twenty-two, in the pre-K, elementary, middle, and high school setting. I previously worked with high school students on the occupational course of study track to assist with their independence in activities of daily living that would apply to their future career path. I currently work with students in the pre-K and elementary settings. At this point in the current school year, I have completed evaluations, attended eighty-three IAP meetings, and have a total of seventy-nine students on my caseload. I see students directly in a one-on-one environment, as well as on a consultative basis in the classroom environment. I have worked with students on hand-washing skills, using utensils to stab or scoop food independently at lunchtime, and how they hold their crayons or pencils. I have strategized with teachers, physical therapists, speech therapists, and the assistive technology team, to name a few, in order to promote independence with students. I have created and implemented sensory diets to assist with students' regulation in the classroom. This may look like trialing a chewy, a vibration tool, a weighted blanket, a vest, or additional opportunities for specific movement breaks within their educational environment. I have created obstacle courses in the pre-K setting for students to work on a variety of sensory input, as well as balance, coordination, and strength necessary to play with their peers on the playground. I chose to work in the public school system because I find it to be the most natural environment for our students. Like many others, I don't work in the schools for the paycheck, although I couldn't live without it. I love what I do, and I love the people and the students that I work with. Like many others, I spend countless nights at home and money out of my own pocket to create fun activities for students, like the teachers you provided with a raise and the social workers and speech therapists included in that. Occupational therapists and physical therapists do just as much for the students of this education system. I continue to stay because I have a dream that one day our profession will matter just as much in my heart, or on paper, as it does in my heart. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Morrow, followed by John Amon Chukwu.
Hey, I've been here many times, and I'm going to talk about some of the same things that I've talked about before. Our children are suffering. The mental health in this, in this state specifically, we have tripled the number of suicides just in North Carolina among ten-to-eighteen-year-olds. And when we want to talk about gun violence, and we want to talk about the death, let me tell you, the number one thing that is causing deaths of our minors is auto accidents, and the second thing is suicide. We now have, for every suicide, there are nine children that are put into the hospital for suicide attempts, and there are forty-seven that are there for self-harm. Let me tell you, mental health is a real issue, and us talking about it and talking about it is not helping. What we need to do is protect our children's innocence. Let me explain something. First, something is hearable, it's thinkable, then it's hearable, then it's watchable, then it's speakable, and then it's doable. And, and when Ms. Johnson-Hustler was talking about the sexual abuse of our children, it is happening in grave proportions, and it's happening in our schools. The statistics for 2019 to 2020, sixty percent of the, of the sexual assaults that were actually reported were reported on elementary and middle-school-aged children. This is an atrocity. Right now, as we speak, there are over two hundred and forty teachers who still have their teaching license in North Carolina. It might be suspended, but they still have it on the books, and they have been accused, accused or convicted of crimes against children. We have got to have background checks. We have got to stop racing our children's innocence by talking about things that they are not able to handle. Let me explain something to you. There's a doctor named Dr. Judith Reisman. She has done decades of studies and put together studies from around the world that talk about what happens when you discuss sexual issues with children, whether it's in book form, whether it's in a video form, when, whether you talk about it. in book form, whether it's in a video form, whether you talk about it. Let me tell you what happens to their brain. There's something called the frontal lobe, and it is well-known that that frontal lobe is not developed until we're 25 or 26-years-old. Do you know what pornography does to a young child's brain? It completely rewires it, and it makes them unable. You know what the frontal lobe is responsible for? It's for judgment. It's for social and for sexual behavior. It's also for understanding what the impact of a situation will be, a decision that you're making. And we are rewiring our children's brains. When they are introduced, when they are talked about, when they are confronted with this adult issue, it changes their brain, it increases anxiety, increases depression, and it's increasing the confusion of who they are as people. We've got to stop telling our children that they have a mental health disorder, when they don't like their bodies, when they feel uncomfortable during puberty, when they don't like their voice change. That is natural, it is normal. We need to start telling our children that that is true. Stop making it normal to be abused. Stop making it normal to be sexually active in childhood. Stop making it normal for pedophiles to be attracted to children. This is wrong. It's happening in our schools. You just heard these books, and it's time for us to protect our kids.
Our next speaker is John Amonchukwu, followed by Julie Page.
Tonight, I'm filled with righteous indignation. Want to define something for you tonight. The definition for pervert. It means to alter something from its original course, meaning, or state to a distortion or corruption of what was first intended. It means to lead someone away from what is considered right, natural, or acceptable. This book has been permitted in six schools in the Wake County Public School System. This book explicitly details anal sex, blowjob tips, a response to a letter about gay sex, and BDSM. I'll read just a little bit of this perversion that we have allowed in the school system. So he bends me over the bed and drizzles some lube on my ass. I made him wear a condom, of course, and he starts pushing it in. And then we get to the blowjob tip. It says, "Use your lungs to suck, not your lips to pull." You're not trying to yank the D-I-C-K off with your mouth, you're trying to make it feel good. Use your tongue. Doesn't it make you cringe as I read that to you? I witnessed as each person came up and read different things from the books that's in the public school system here. You all cringe. You don't like it. You don't want to hear it aloud. You don't want anyone to read it. It makes you crawl in your skin. It's a dastardly deed. The question today is, who is the pervert that's allowing this to be purchased and delivered to our libraries? Come out, come out, from wherever you are. Who is the pervert that signs off on this filth? Who are you? You know? What do you stand for to accept this? Can you be in your right mind and be decent as a human to allow this to be at the access and the fingertips of children? Who is the pervert that thinks that this is okay? Who is the pervert that sits smug in the school board meeting while this is taking place? Who is it? You don't have to answer that question. We know who the perverts are. There's one political party in this country that supports this junk. It's the Democrat Party. It's a party that castrates children, mutilates children, perverts children, grooms children, murders children, and indoctrinates children. We know who the perverts are. And NCAE, listen, you all have signed off on this, and it needs to be removed from every school in Wake County.
Your time is up, sir. Our next speaker is Julie Page. I will remind members of the audience to allow the person at the podium to speak. Thank you. Julie Page is our next speaker.
Oh, I don't want to follow that. Hey, y'all. Hard act to follow there. All right. On the agenda tonight is a revised Board Ethics Policy. It says the Board should remain nonpartisan, just as you were all elected. Each member should not subordinate the education of children to any partisan principle, group, interest, or personal ambition. This would include the NCAE, of which only 4.5% of all employees are members. There are other things listed in the policy, but perhaps the most important one is the last. Your first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students. With your oath to make a sound, basic education a priority, you are required to ensure the following components are met, according to the Leandro case from 1997. Ability to read, write, speak English; knowledge of math and physical science; knowledge of geography, history, basic economic and political systems; academic and vocational skills to enable students to engage in post-secondary education, training, or gainful employment; reading, writing, math, history, science, economics; not equity; not social-emotional learning; not gender ideology. Equity is an absolute impossibility. It implies that everyone can have the same lifestyle and the same outcomes. That will never happen. We are all human. We are created by God. We are all different, but yet, we are equal in His eyes. Equity actually forces unequal access to goods and services. Be leaders and promote actual equality, so that no one has an unfair advantage. Social-emotional learning and practice today is disguised as mental health with the actual goal of shifting the values, beliefs, attitudes, and worldviews of children. It manipulates children to accept a progressive ideology that supports gender fluidity, sexual preference, and systemic oppression. It leads to seeing the world through an equity lens. I will remind you here that this SEL is described here as a partisan doctrine and not compliant with your ethical duties. You also have the ethical duty to obey local, state, and federal laws in protecting children from sexually explicit content, obscenity, and vulgarity. Adult subject matter of any kind have no place in our public schools. Schools are not social justice centers. Schools are not health centers. Schools are not gender indoctrination centers. Schools are for academics supplemented with arts and athletics. I will end with the request to dismantle the Office of Equity Affairs. Use the money from that ill-conceived effort to supplement teacher pay, classroom supplies, and for school security. Use it to fund students and not social programs.
This concludes public comments.